For anyone that wants to call in for public comment for the open session, you would dial 888-251-2949, or 215-818-610694. And the access code for today is 3726266. Wait three seconds and press pound again. Madam City Clerk, could you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor, we have a quorum for the City Council, Successor Agency, Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
So are there any public comments, operator?
No, Mayor, we do not have any public comments.
With that, we'll close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H one.
What register?
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members. Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. Consent calendar, items two through ten.
Don't move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR one.
Staff report recommending approval of Amendment seven to Agreement number nineteen dash one five five with NOSAMAN LLP to incorporate California labor law requirements.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR two.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution accepting thirty-one million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand ninety-five dollars in coronavirus state and local fiscal relief funds established by the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. SPH one.
Staff report requesting that a public hearing be set to receive public comments to consider approval of the proposed revised twenty twenty consolidated annual performance evaluation, evaluation report for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Set the public hearing from March first, twenty twenty-two at two P M. Report City Attorney A one.
Thank you, Mayor. CS one, we have Blanca Salsito versus the City of Inglewood and Andreas Ochoa. Case number twenty-one STCV fifteen zero eighty-five. Discussions were held and direction was given. The second closed session item is Emily Cadiz versus the City of Inglewood. Case number nineteen STCV fourteen seven seven zero. Discussions were held and direction was given. There are no oral reports from the City Attorney.
DM one.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I just wanted to congratulate the Rams and the City of Inglewood for our championship win at the Super Bowl. And I also want to thank all the staff that contributed to making that a safe and enjoyable weekend for all visitors who came from all over the world to the City of Inglewood.
Okay, guys, so Artie already jumped over you guys. So you guys can't congratulate the Rams now. It's been done, all right?
I'll do it a different way.
Oh, my goodness. CC one, City Clerk?
Hi, Mayor, thank you. Just to echo the sentiments of the City Manager, would like to congratulate the staff, all the staff, for having hosting a wonderful Taste of Inglewood. Also wanting to thank those that were involved with the other stage, Kiyokia and David. Congratulations to them as well. And wanted to say to our community that I was extremely proud and just so happy to be a part. My mother, who was watching from afar, was just, you know, complimenting our city and was just saying how wonderful the community came together. And I told her how awesome the policing was. And I really, really would just want to say to our staff, and I talked to Louis about this, Mr. Roosevelt, he was on point. He was an ex, he made sure the streets were clean along with his crew. But they were out there and they were fantastic. And I just wanted to tell you guys, my mom was so very pleased about that. Also, March the first, we will be having a public hearing. So wanted the public to know that, March first at two o'clock. And then this year's theme for Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness. And I must pay homage to all of the healthcare professionals that worked so hard and diligently to keep us all healthy and safe. And last but not least, of course, Mayor, I have to congratulate the Los Angeles Rams on winning the Super Bowl. We, that was just so exciting. The City of Inglewood, I mean, hosting the Super Bowl here in the community. Fantastic. And with that, I just want to say, yesterday's perspective of Inglewood is not today's perspective. I'm finished, Mayor.
That's just not right. That's just not right.
That's it.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. What else is there to say? CS. Oh, boy, the successor agency's in session. CSA two.
Yes, Mayor, approval of the minutes of the meetings held on January the twenty-fifth, twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two special, and February first, twenty twenty-two.
Don't move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Successor agency members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Well, during the successor agency, H two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, January twenty-fifth, twenty-two special, and February first, twenty twenty-two.
Don't move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Housing Authority members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. During the Housing Authority, F one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on February one, twenty twenty-two.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Finance Authority members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Let's see. Was that F one or P one?
F one, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll adjourn the Finance Authority. The Parking Authority's in session, P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on January twenty-fifth, twenty-two special, and February one, twenty twenty-two.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Parking Authority members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. During the Parking Authority, the Joint Powers Authority is in session, JPA one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on February one, twenty twenty-two.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Joint Powers Authority members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. There are no appointments to boards of commissions and committees. Public comment, any person's motion to address City Council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time. One minute. Operator, are there any callers?
No, Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Council comments, Councilman Dotson, District one.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm gonna repeat what everybody else is saying.
I know, it's, it's just not right, is it?
When we come up behind our staff, we gotta think of something to say. But anyway, I want to congratulate Stan Krunki and the Ram family for winning the Super Bowl. But I want to praise the City of Inglewood. From the mayor and council down, this city showed up and showed out. We were able to do that. The traffic in, in less than an hour was all gone. I've had people to call me to let me, they wanted to know, did we really have the Super Bowl, because then they didn't park in front of their house. So the city will always be a part of L.A. County, but it's now a part of the world. People know who Inglewood, the city of Inglewood, is. So I want to thank all of you, as well as this council, for putting us on the map. I want to thank Seven-Eleven Gail Pew for her help in putting on the couple of Seven-Eleven's event in my district. I really appreciate that. And the Taste of Inglewood. If you didn't come out for the Taste of Inglewood, you, you got a problem. I mean, it was unbelievable. And, you know, all the food was delicious. All the people that was out there, and, you know, I, I really want to comment on the police enforcement out there. It was excellent. And we had people from the Sheriff Department, people from other departments, and people from our department. So I have nothing but praise for them. And if you're not proud of your city, there's something wrong with you right now. I was able to go to the opening of Snoop Dogg's new clothing store. The mayor and chief beat me there. But I, I, I went on by and I had a chance to meet with Snoop. He's gonna be a good addition to the, the City of Inglewood. Nice guy. It, it's just surprising to me, as famous as he is, he's still a nice guy. You know, he's, he's down home boy. The play Sixty Kids Day, the NFL hosts over seven hundred kids for the NFL Kids Play. I wanted to thank Nike, the Jumpman brand, the shoe place, for partnering to renovate the outdoor basketball courts at Derby Park. This is, this is something special. Those courts needed repair. We were able to get it, and thanks to Sabrina and her group, they are now like new courts. The one thing I left out, I want to thank Angela and her group for putting on that Taste of Inglewood. It was perfectly organized. Nobody had one complaint. So congratulations to her and her whole team. They did a wonderful job. And now I would like to invite all of you out for my District one's shredding event. It'll be this Saturday, nine to twelve. And I got to tell you, like before, you gotta be there early so you don't get left out. With that, Mayor, I thank you so much, and I'm done.
George, how is there any paper left in your district? How is that possible? How is there any paper left in this district?
You gotta go digital, George.
Okay, okay. Councilman Padilla, District two.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I, I want to add that to do what we did and what we've been doing in Inglewood is not something that just happens by happen chance. It doesn't, it doesn't. If that was the case, other cities would be able to do things spectacular, like we're doing here in the City of Inglewood. These things only happen for several reasons. One is you have a strong leadership team. We have strong leadership in our executives in the City of Inglewood. And we have a community that believes in what we're doing and that supports us. And when we come out to the community to ask for that support, they give it to us. And so I can tell you, having spoken to several residents and business owners in the last couple of days, they are ecstatic and they are very proud, as they've always been, but even more so now, to be not only a part of the City of Inglewood, but to be in the City of Inglewood. As you recall, when I first ran, I said, we were gonna make Inglewood the place to drive to, not through. And we are doing that, and we will continue to do that. So when I talk about these things happening, it happens because you have people like Brian Walker and his staff that were in charge of our emergency operations. They had a plan, they had a strategy, and they had a mission. And they worked together with other law enforcement and other non-governmental agencies to put together the E O C and the Joint Operations Centers, working with local, state, and federal authorities. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Chief Franarata and all the men and women at the Inglewood Police Department for their work and their dedication to making this event a huge success. We are and will continue to be on the map for all the right reasons. So the Rams won the Super Bowl, right? We're excited. I mean, shit, excuse me. I mean, heck, I'm excited.
Oh, gosh darn.
Oh, gosh darn it.
Not even I have done that.
Damn. Can you edit that? You know, but remember one thing, we are the, they are the L.A. Rams from Inglewood. Right? And if it wasn't for what we did here in Inglewood, Mayor, can I get an extra thirty seconds?
Absolutely.
If it wasn't for what we.
If you don't curse anymore.
What we did in Inglewood, and I say we, the community, our staff, the Rams wouldn't be here, right? We did some heavy lifting when folks were saying that we're getting played, right? You guys are fools. They're using you because St. Louis wants to do this, and we didn't believe it for a minute. We stood firm. And look, in the City of Inglewood, we have the world champions, Los Angeles Rams from Inglewood, Super Bowl champs. And so that's something for all of us to be very proud of, and we are. I also want to give a shout out to one of our World War II vets that, you know, lived here in Inglewood for many years, Urban Simonet. He celebrated, I think it's his ninety-fourth birthday. He's now living out in Las Vegas because of family that wanted him closer. But he's called me on Super Bowl Sunday to congratulate Inglewood, and he was wearing his Inglewood hat that we had given him at one of his birthday celebrations. And he was, again, just ecstatic to be from Inglewood. A Taste of Inglewood, a huge success, off the charts with the entertainment, again, the strategy, the implementation of a plan and a mission. So Angela, you're sitting there, thank you so much for, for how hard you guys all worked, all our staff that came together to help make it a success. And David Rice. David Rice, it was his idea to do a Taste of Inglewood several years ago, four, five years ago. And he executed this, working with everyone, and it's a huge success. Everybody's already talking about, we gotta do another one sooner than later. So I want to thank David Rice, Kiyokia, all of his staff as well for, for what they did to put us on the map, again, for all the right reasons. And I know Councilmember Morales is gonna talk about an event we attended earlier today, and I'm gonna pass it on. And again, thank you all, and go Rams from Inglewood. Thank you.
Okay. Only thing I'd like to modify that, because they aren't originally from Inglewood, but they now are of Inglewood. That's the only thing I'd like to change.
No, they're from Inglewood.
No, they're not. They started out in Los Angeles.
They're from Inglewood now, man.
No, no, you guys, we can't do that. We, we have to agree on this now.
No, no, we do. So it's restated, yes.
They're either of Inglewood or from Inglewood.
Argue about it for a second.
Okay, so anyway.
How about go Rams?
Any, anyway, so check this out. So do you guys want me to start, like, doing this, like, in reverse order now, so, like, you guys get to go first every now and again? And now everything isn't taking up all the oxygen and sucked out of the room? Okay.
They can continue to do their thing.
They're very bright.
It's part of our personality.
They do a good job.
They do a good job.
I didn't say they do a good job.
We rock in other ways.
But, but everything is used up. Okay.
It's never all used up.
Councilwoman Falk, District four.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So everything has been stated here so well that I will not restate everything again. But I too want to just say, congratulations, L.A. Rams of Inglewood, L.A. Rams of Inglewood. And what I want to do is, I want to thank some, the District four residents, truthfully, that over the last year have dealt with extra traffic and trash and noise, and, and just different things. Everybody's been very excited, but they have dealt with a lot, and I really want to thank them for everything that they've done to share in this wonderful dream that has happened in Inglewood. Because, you know, we, we do, you, a lot of people don't know, but we, we do a lot over there. And so I want to, your councilwoman wants to thank you for everything, for tolerating a lot of stuff. And so you guys have been amazing. I want to also thank Angela Williams. She did an amazing job with the Taste of Inglewood. Louis Atwell did an amazing job with organizing Super Bowl Day and every other event and making sure the traffic flows very well. The mayor's a, a dynamic spokesperson. He's been doing interviews, like, several interviews a day, and he's been doing such an amazing job. And so we are so blessed and lucky to have such a wonderful mayor that always puts the residents of Inglewood first. And we have just a dynamic City of Inglewood City Council as well. So just again, congratulations and everyone, everyone, not just the Rams, our leadership, everyone. And also, I want to announce that I am having a District four virtual town hall. It's coming up on March third. And so I want everybody to put that date on their calendars. It'll happen at six P M. And we're gonna kind of go over a lot of stuff. We haven't had a town hall in, in a little while, since last year, later on in the year. So it's time for us, and so I'm looking forward to having our next District four town hall on March third. Put that on your calendar. Lastly, I want to, if we can, acknowledge Butch Wolfoke, District four, long-term resident that passed away yesterday after a bout with cancer. Butch was a big supporter of the City of Inglewood and District four. He was the unofficial block club captain for Atkinson Avenue and resided at Atkinson Avenue. Butch was instrumental in getting members mentors for the city's youth sports enrichment programs at our parks, and he supported city events and programs like our National Night Out back in the day. So would like to close this meeting today in honor of District four resident, long-term member of our community, Butch Wolfoke. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Morales, District three.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, growing up in Inglewood, you always grow up with this chip on your shoulder where you're constantly being judged when you go outside of the city. You move away to school and people know you're from Inglewood, and they have this, you know, preconceived notion of how you grew up, what your neighborhood looks like, and what you can do. And, you know, you grow up with that feeling. You grow up with that feeling, and, and there's people you grow up with. And you always grow up saying, man, we should do this here, we should do that. And I'm talking about, I'm not even talking about young adults, I'm talking about nine, ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds. You know, and we always, in Inglewood, we always believed in ourselves. You know, we always believed we're a proud city and what our potential is. Well, I was telling some of the guys up here, you know, on Monday, I must have gotten about twenty calls from, 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 from folks I grew up with here in the neighborhood. And, man, you could just hear it on their voice, how, how proud they were. They were like, man, ee, brother ee, dude. I mean, they didn't have to say much more than that when I picked up the phone. And I knew. I said, yeah, man, can you believe this? Beep, right? The, the, the thing about it is that I felt it. I felt that same pride all day long, Sunday, from family all over the place texting me. Monday, when those folks started calling me, and they were, they just felt like they just wanted to keep that feeling going. And it just showed that we'd been holding what everybody saw in so long. And that's how beautiful it is when it comes out. And, and, and we're, we're an awesome city, an awesome city. You know, and, and, you know, so much began, everything begins with a conversation. And I'm, I'm very happy I was at the first one. And, and I'll tell you that, you know, before, going back a few years before that.
Summer of twenty thirteen.
Well, in that, a few years before that, you know, I remember when me and the mayor first started really working together. By the way, before he says it, I'll say it, you know, I didn't endorse the mayor coming in, you know? But what, there was a point where we started working together, getting to know each other, and the mayor asked me, and I don't even know if you remember, he said to, why? Why did you open up to me? And I told the mayor, I said, man, because I believed you when you said, we were at the time talking about the forum, and I said, Jim, I, because I believed you, right? And I remember that that's true, because, see, so many people can, can talk about a vision, so many people can talk about, you know, these dreams and all these things. But until you truly believe it, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. And in Inglewood, we started to believe. You know, we started to really believe in big, huge markers, in big things. And we started to reach little milestones of it. And that momentum culminated on Sunday. You know, we're always joking up here that if we were a Netflix special, man, if we were a Netflix special, we could do something, right? So, you know, coincidentally, some of those feelings started when Jim showed up. So, you know, it matters, the people we have. And nobody up here is perfect, but for some reason, the chemistry, you know, works up here. And we used to get beat up for agreeing up here. We don't get beat up very often anymore. You know, I'm sure they're waiting for us to mess up, and then it'll happen again. But for now, I just wanted to share more than, than just tokens, tokens of the day. I wanted to share that, that pride that Inglewood felt on Sunday, that Inglewood felt on Monday, that they feel today, from folks that remember when, you know, we had very little to be proud of. Those same folks, you know, they're proud today. And, and I am so happy for the residents of Inglewood. Every language, everybody, I'm telling you. And, you know, it's a big deal. But I, I don't want to not thank certain people. So of course, the Police Department, awesome, you know, talk about a small department handling big things. Chief Franarata, you know, amazing, amazing, the fact, you know, leadership matters, period. Brian Walker, who, who isn't right here right now, but big deal, thank you. Artie, of course, you manage personalities, brother. That does, that's a silent skill. Sabrina and of course Angela, huge, the concert, you know, of course, with, with David, who honestly, he should prove to be a giant when it comes to this stuff, because that was an awesome three-day concert. Your role you played, Angela, that was huge, man. And it, and it was awesome. It was awesome. You know, Louis Atwell, who I call, he's one of my first calls, no matter what's happening. Thank you for all the help in the neighborhood, for all the parking issues. And I think that's it, Mayor. I should have thought about something bigger to close with, but that's all I got.
Wow. I, I gotta tell you that in fifty years, and I told the executive staff this on Monday, I think, in fifty years of public service, the last two weeks are the best of all that time. Working in, for three different cities, always hired because there was a problem, and always having to do reclamation work and total reorganization and. and always having to do reclamation work and total reorganization and changing of cultures, and being proud of the work that was done by the time I was done. I have never been more proud, never been more proud than today. It goes without saying that Angela did just a magnificent job. It goes without saying that Sabrina Barnes is always there, like, um, a role player. Whatever you need, she's there, you know? Both of them, at times, looking at me like I'm crazy when I say, "I wanna do this or do that." And they don't know that I know, they're looking at me like I'm crazy. But i- it always works out. There are things like, the people that stepped in the breach when unanticipated things came. The, the, the concert series was magnificent on Saturday. There's probably twenty thousand people that came in and out of Market Street. And we didn't anticipate that the people that had trucks would dump their grease in the street and do things like that. And Louis's people came. They came before the Super Bowl, and they got Market Street spick and span. And this guy named Roosevelt, I've heard about him so many times. So if you wanted Louis to acknowledge your people that stepped into the breach without complaints, uh, this is the time for you to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Roosevelt Robinson is our supervisor in Public Works.
Oh, Roosevelt Robinson, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, Anthony Watson. Uh, we just had a whole host of, of folks that stepped out and really picked things up. We wanted to make sure that Market Street was open for business on Sunday, 'cause that's probably their biggest day, other than the three-day event. So we went out and we cleaned it up. Of course, Angela, with her crews as well, helped clean. Everybody stepped out of the box, that's what I was saying yesterday. And they really did things even outside of what they normally do. So thank you to everybody that was involved.
Now, you know, uh, we had a Joint Operations Center that was overseen by, uh, Brian Walker. Emery Ward had the private security, uh, detail for, for, I started to say Third Street, Market Street. It was like Third Street.
It was.
You know, I spent fifteen years in Santa Monica, so if I mistake it for Third Street, you know some good stuff. And Emery, we appreciate all that you did. When we designed the senior center, we designed it with the thought that because City Hall is on the Inglewood Newport Fault, which should really be named the Culver City Newport Fault, because it runs the Culver City, but they figured, "Let's put it on Inglewood." But anyway, so we designed it so that it could be an emergency operations center. You notice the floor is a concrete, uh, it has a, an industrial kitchen so that we could run extended operations out of there. Turns out, we had a use for it before that. Ended up being a joint operations center with the FBI, Department of Homeland Security, LAPD, sheriffs, just a host of agencies. Now, they asked Brian, because, you know, this is a big event, Super Bowl. And because what we had was so multi-layered, so thorough, because of the facilities that we had, somebody from federal government thought we had ten thousand employees. And he was ashamed to tell them that we only have seven hundred and seventy. But you know why it seemed like that? Because we work as a team. We work as a team. And, uh, I just have never been more proud. I have to name one person, you know, we've mentioned Chief Franarata, he's done an excellent job, the Police Department, captains, deputy chief, um, every officer. But a guy that doesn't ever gets mentioned, because what he does makes it invisible, is Bill Thompson. He's a former lieutenant in the Police Department, former assistant chief for me at the airport, and he's, uh, in charge of parking operations now for an outside company. And Bill works his butt off. He's out there all the time.
Agreed.
And we ran inbound and outbound in less than two hours, coming both ways. That was never, never to be believed. And so this nine-square-mile city, with seven hundred and seventy-some odd employees, a hundred and ten thousand people, hosted the largest single event in this country that occurs every year. The only thing bigger worldwide single event is FIFA World Cup.
And we might get that.
And, and we're, and, and we're working on getting them for 2026, for 2026. So what I wanna say is, um, I, I didn't mean to be redundant, but this is, this is the greatest day, these are the greatest days of the city of Inglewood. We, we had our time on the world stage, and all I had was people asking me about, "Well, what, what, what are we gonna do about the truckers? They're gonna shut down the four oh five." And, and I said, "I don't pay attention to social media chatter." I mean, we key take that as intelligence, but I said, "If anybody parks any trucks near our venue, they're gonna have them towed, and they're gonna be arrested." I said, "We don't have to talk about stuff like that." Then they said, "Well, what about the traffic?" I said, "We've been handling BHS concerts, isn't it BHS?"
ETS.
ETS, something like that.
ETS, yeah.
You know, I'd, I don't go. But I said, "We had people from eighty-three countries here for three days in a row, uh, sold out the place. We've handled the traffic." I said, "Just because they're football fans, doesn't gonna make it any different." And we proved it to be true. We've learned from this time." And then the, then they were talking to me about that we, we cleaned out homeless encampments for the Super Bowl. It's about three weeks before it, two and a half miles away. They were just looking for something. And what happened on the day of the event? No crime, handled the traffic. People were saying it's the best Super Bowl that they've seen. And I'm just, like I said, I'm so proud of everyone. I mean, this is a fantastic endeavor, a fantastic endeavor. So the only thing that I would like to take a little bit of modification is that to the Los Angeles Rams of Inglewood. And, and I would hope that we all, when we refer to the Rams, that's how we refer to them, because if, if we don't, then nobody else will. Okay? I, I mean, I called the, the, the league about, you know, the little banner that runs across, and they're good about putting Inglewood, California. And, but we have to maintain our brand, because we, the city of Inglewood, brought the NFL back to the Los Angeles region. And as, and as I said in a, a press conference the other day, we're proud to be a vessel for the rest of the county. It was estimated, we'll see what the numbers end up being finally, that the Super Bowl would have an economic impact on, on the economy for the county of four hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. That's a big thing. And that's because of the city of Inglewood. That's because of the people up here and the people out there that work together. And we have to keep working together. And my last thing I wanna say is that I haven't heard one complaint about nothing since the NFC Championship game. Not one complaint about anything. And I, this is, uh, unusual, and I know Eloy and my compatriots up here would tell you, "That's unusual." So there's something real happening here, something real happening here. So congratulations to everybody. And today, uh, we attended, uh, a groundbreaking ceremony to recognize an investment by the NFL, the Rams, and Nike that will aggregate to about three-point-five million dollars to the renovation of, uh, Carolyn Coleman Field that will be, uh, you know, that is the home field for Inglewood High. And this renovation is going to move the headquarters for the district to the building right across the street from us, across from Inglewood High. And the facilities, there'll be locker room facilities, and there'll be a total sports complex. And so why is this happening? Because we have partners now, partners that wanna invest. And the thing that I say to everybody, "Come see me now," is that, "Are you invested in the school district?" And people are stepping up. So with that, we're going to close the meeting in the name of Butch Wolfoke, and we're adjourned.